And as required by open meeting law, I'm not going to say that right now. Can I get a motion to go into executive session and we will not return before 6:00 P. M.?
Would you like me to read them?
Yes, please.
Madam Chair, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21a3, to discuss with respect to collective bargaining for all town unions. And the Chair has determined that open session would have a detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position, Harwich Employees Association, H.E.A. Item B, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in the Port Restaurant for this town of Harwich matters, as the Chair has declared that an open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town. Item C, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21a7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, the open meeting law, Mass General Law, 38, Section 22fG, to review, approve, and/or discuss the possible release of executive session meeting minutes dated July 8, 2024, and July 22, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Pete?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
We were in executive session earlier this evening, and we took action only on item C to approve the executive session minutes from July 8th and July 22nd, 2024. As required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the Chair prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing nobody, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Do we have anybody for public comment and announcement?
Steve Nixon, Chair CPC, and to the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, you don't have to answer these questions tonight because you didn't anticipate I being here, but we can have a conversation. So, first thing I'd like to lead with is, I'd like to, I'd like the help of the Board. I'd like to request that the CPC accounts be trued up. That's the first thing. The second thing is, I'm in the process right now of putting together some information for the town administrator. And it goes back to, a few years back, KP Law developed a process or an application for land grants, land grants, for grants in general. Those grants would come from the CPC, would go to you for your confirmation, your signature. Then the money would get dispersed. There's been a hiccup in that process. And I don't want to get into the details of the hiccup, but I just would like to pass that along to the Board. Joe's working with me to try to figure out what the next step is, but I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Okay.
Third thing is, the records request, I'm changing hats. The record request from myself to the Board for the information that I had done the research on for the Record Youth Program. It's somewhere in the archives. That information was given to the former clerk of the town of Harwich. Where it is now, I don't know, but as you know, records of that sort cannot be destroyed. They have to be there somewhere. So I'm asking for the Board's help to retrieve those records.
Okay.
And that's about it. If you have any questions, you can ask.
Do any Board members have any questions for David?
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Joe?
Just if I could, on the second topic, I think they're generally referred to as grant agreements.
Okay.
Whereby the town is granting funds through CPC to the recipients.
Thank you, Joe.
All set?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming in.
Hi, good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Alisa Magnata. I'm the CEO of Housing Assistance Corporation, and I just wanted to let you know that I'm here this evening. I saw that we were on your agenda in case questions come up. Seeing that we were on the agenda, we did send in a letter detailing where we were with our project in Dennis. So I believe that was distributed. If not, I have a copy and happy to go over it when our agenda comes up. I just wanted you to know that we were here.
Thank you. And we did get it. It was dispersed, everyone.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Carolyn Carey, Community Center Director. I know it's a very important topic, but I wanted to introduce the public to Acorn, our caterpillar over at the community center. And this is Acorn, and I'm really bringing her here because the last time we had pebbles, it got stolen. So if you see this in anyone else's yard, she is chipped, I'm just saying. No, but come in, paint a rock, and add it to our little friend Acorn, so. And please check out the community center calendar. We have a lot of events going on, including kite making, which we've had 100 requests for, so there may be a lot of kites around town, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
I believe for the record, there's an identifying mark on Acorn.
There is.
Yep, a birthmark, per se.
Good evening. Emily Mitchell, Town Clerk. I hate following Carolyn and Acorn, but just a few election-related updates to share with the Board and through you to the public. So tomorrow is exactly four weeks to the day from the state primary election. Election Day is September 3, 2024. There are three different ways that voters can participate in this election. The first is voting by mail. That process has already begun. We've mailed about 1,000 ballots so far, and we anticipate mailing about 3,000 by end of week. And that process will continue on a rolling basis through Election Day. Folks do have to submit an application in order to vote by mail, and the application deadline is Monday, August 26 at 5:00 P. M. So if you're interested in voting by mail, please do get those applications in to us. The second way to vote in this election is through the in-person early voting process, and you will be voting later this evening to set both the hours and the location for that. So we'll be sure after your vote to publicize the details broadly. And then, of course, folks are welcome to vote in person on Election Day. Voters in all four precincts in the town of Harwich, vote at the community center, in the gymnasium, 100 Oak Street, and polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p. M. Voter registration deadline for this election is Saturday, August 24 at 5:00 p. M. We will be open on that Saturday for voter registration purposes. Would love to see folks, but you can also register by mail or online through the Secretary of State's office. Any questions on election details?
Any Board members have any questions? Anybody from the public have any questions?
Okay. And then one other election-related update. We are planning an event on election processes. So we know that in the current climate, there is some confusion or even distrust in the election process. So we wanted to create an event where we could give some information to the public, but also be available to answer any questions about elections. So any topic about elections is fair game. If you want to know about election equipment, or election, you know, ballot storage, ballot retention, how equipment is tested, or certified, or used, or transported, any of those types of questions, we welcome and invite. So that will be Tuesday, August 20 from 5:00 to 6:00 p. M. at the community center. More information to be posted probably tomorrow. Nothing is partisan, so it won't be about candidates, it won't be about party issues or ballot questions. It really is just a process-oriented event. So we welcome folks to come and listen and ask their questions.
So no registration or anything?
No registration, no open to anyone, and we will have an option for folks to ask questions anonymously, too. So if they want to ask a question, but they're not comfortable, we'll have a mechanism for them to write those questions and get them to us.
Great. Thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment and announcement?
Teresa Johnson, King Henry Road. I saw on the agenda there was going to be a traffic update, but I just wasn't sure. It didn't state like what area the traffic update was going to be on.
So we're going to talk about traffic as relates to Queen Anne. We're also, I can defer to you, Joe, but we're going to have Steve Rhodes on from VHB. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I just, it wasn't clear.
And it's not just limited to those areas because there's also questions about traffic safety in Harwich Port, et cetera, so.
Okay. So we were just curious as far as like a traffic study for that Pine Oaks Village development.
That's what we're going to talk about with VHB, about moving forward with a study, and we have a contract with them currently, so that will be the gist of that conversation.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else for public comment and announcement?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So the Board, bear with me on this one, and this is going to come a little out of left field, but I feel this is very important. I try to never miss an opportunity to recognize somebody who's doing a hell of a job, whether that be family, whether that be business, or in this case, the town of Harwich. And that's exactly what I plan on doing right now. So Dean Panko, if you don't mind, would you, would you step up to that podium, please, if you don't mind? And I'm going to make this brief, but you don't even know what he did yet. Give me a minute.
Let's meet over.
No, maybe you do. Dean, thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
And, and I would just like to let the Board know and the public know exactly what happened two weeks ago, which ended up having you come here today. So I had to go out to Red River Beach to investigate a little issue. And when I went up to Red River Beach, it was about 130 degrees on the asphalt.
Yes.
It was 100% humidity. The place was packed, and I drive up in my, my nice, cool, air-conditioned car, and this is where the magic happened. This is, in my opinion, a magic moment for the customer service aspect of what our town provides to not only our residents, but our visitors. And I roll down the window, I don't have a beach sticker, so that's problem number one. And, but if you live here, you don't have one because you can't go to the beach, but so I pull up and I roll down my window and, and over walks this gentleman with a huge smile and says the magic words. "Good afternoon, what can I do to help you?" And I proceeded to tell him why I was there and who I was and why I was there.
And, yeah?
And, and a conversation began.
I know.
Wasn't it great?
It was.
And Dean, Dean, Dean is an all-star, and he is, he informed me of how he conducts business down there, how he takes care of the people who come, who he knows won't find parking, how he collects money. And then he proceeded to inform me that he was parking attendant of the week, the week prior to when I met you.
Right.
And how long did we spend? 15 minutes having the chat?
A good 15.
Yeah. And I learned a lot about Dean and what Dean does for our community, our incredible town of Harwich. And I just wanted to make sure that me personally, the rest of the Board, say a big thank you to you for what you do, because our town, same with Carolyn and Emily, and I could go down the list, we have such fantastic employees, but it was time to recognize somebody who I never would have met if I would not have been part of this Select Board. So Dean, say a few words about what you do.
Maybe I might say more than a few words.
Please, we don't have a ton of time here, Dean.
Okay.
But let's hear from you a little bit about how you love your job.
Well, first off, I want to thank you for inviting me here. And I've had a lot of big experiences in my life, but this is really special, and I'll always remember this for the rest of my life. And I want to thank the Board, and I want to thank the town of Harwich for recognizing people and honoring them. I think that's very, very nice. I'm a beach guard parking attendant for the town of Harwich, and I know that collecting day passes is revenue for the town of Harwich. In the course of my work at certain beaches, I know I've collected a lot, a lot of beach passes, to the point where I, I was overwhelmed. And I know that tells you what I'm doing. And throughout my work, I've had so many people come up to me and compliment me about my job, and they say, "You're doing a great job. Keep doing what you're doing." And I even had some people come up to me and say, "I'm going to call the Selectmen to let them know." I thought, gee, I'm just doing my job. I can't believe this. I have something I want to say. This is before July 20, and there would be cars that would come in to whatever parking lot it was, what beach, and they didn't have a beach sticker. And I asked them, it costs $20 to buy a day pass, and they're very, very hesitant. So I asked them, "How long are you here on the Cape?" And they would say maybe five days, six days, seven. And I would say to them, "It's to your advantage to buy a non-resident beach sticker. It's only $65." And their faces light up. "Where do I go?" I said, "To the community center." "Oh, I don't know how to get there. I've never been here. I've never been on the Cape before." I bring out a map.
He's got maps on a table.
I've got a map.
On the parking lot.
Yeah, I got a map, and I show them where we are, and I direct them to the community center. I tell them it's open seven days a week, and I gave them the hours. "Great." Then I say one other thing. "If you have time, I want you to explore Harwich Port. It has a lot of nice little shops, and also has very nice restaurants all along the way. And it really is a really nice walking town. So if you have time, explore it. You'll enjoy it." And they thanked me so much. These are people who've never been here before. Do I have to do that? No, but that's just part of me, and that's what I do.
Well, Dean, I-
And I want to thank you all for inviting me here tonight.
I, I can't thank you enough for what you do for the town and your enthusiasm and your energy doing it.
I love my job, and I love what I'm doing, and, and it shows. And people have even said that to me. I mean, these are taxpayers at certain beaches that are complimenting me for what I'm doing.
Well, Dean, you matter, and what you do for us matters.
It is.
Can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
Now, Dean, you have to stay for the next three and a half hours and listen to the rest of it. That was the part I didn't tell you at the beach.
Okay.
You can leave if you'd like, but thank you very much for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you for all you do. Did you want to, so do you want to read about the next Select Board meeting?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. The next Select Board meeting will be Monday on August 19, 2024.
Thank you.
Sure.
Hearing nobody else for public comment and announcement, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Item A, get a motion.
Madam Chair, I would just ask that they get separated, please?
Yep.
I move that we approve the Select Board meeting minutes from July 8, 2024.
Second. Moved and seconded. Don?
Prior to voting on this, this isn't going to be as exciting as the prior agenda item, but you can't correct minutes to say something that didn't, that didn't happen in that meeting, but there is more to these minutes. At that, it's referenced in these minutes that I questioned Kathleen Barrett, our Finance Director, about the deficient transfers of money at the end of the year to cover a particular thing. And it was listed as the Cape Cod Commission, and just so everybody out in the audience knows, there's a difference between the Cape Cod Commission and the county government. They're not the same. But the, the commission actually operates through, in terms of its receipts, the office of the Finance Director there. What that was for, and it's not showing up in the minutes here, so I want it to show up in the minutes for this meeting, was that was for our yearly assessment to be a member of the Cape Cod Commission. It was paid to the county, but it was dispersed to the Cape Cod Commission. And had that knowledge been conveyed to us, it would have appeared in these minutes, but that's the clarification, is it, it was both, actually, but the county government was not involved other than taking money in for the commission. And it's something that, under state law, were assessed for participation in the commission, and that's, and I hope this shows up in the next meeting minutes.
Great. And then we have the email trail as well.
Yes, and thank you for your assistance in that.
No problem. So moved and seconded for the July 8, 2024 minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And abstained. Yep.
I move that we approve the Select Board meeting minutes from July 22, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Page 11, and I'm going to need the help of the Board and/or anybody with a memory, but when it talks about combining K-1, 3, and K-1, 4, the minimum of $475, I believe, is not correct. My own notes had 750, but potentially it's 775. I don't know if the Board recalls.
I don't know if I have my proper notebook on that. Do you recall, Joe?
Not with the notes I have present. I can go back and look at that.
Yeah, all right, we'll get that number to confirm that.
775.
You have it? Yeah.
Well, with help from a friend.
You phoned a friend? All right, so 775, so we'll make that.
If I could, in your agenda, excuse me, your minutes on page 11, I would imagine it's the last reference to a dollar amount? Thank you.
Okay.
So that should read 775.
So with that revision, you're good?
Yep.
And Don?
Yeah, it was the same comment I made earlier this evening. I think it would be really helpful in minutes here if they list participating members, if they also list members absent from meeting, or some heading like that, so that you can readily identify, you know, from the header of the minutes, who was there, who wasn't.
So the motion was to approve the meeting minutes from July 22, 2024, with the correction from $475,000 to $775,000.
Right. And I understand-
And I was absent, so I've got to abstain.
Going forward, I understand what you're saying in terms of, and we can, we can revisit that with the Board Secretary, so.
Sure, that's fine.
So that's the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstained. Thank you. And now on to new business. Item A.
Item A, vote to approve the appointment of Eric Kinsheriff as the interim Finance Director and Town Accountant effective August 5, 24.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I would just, I don't have anything in the packet regarding the details of this. Do we have any, any detail as far as, you know, what the cost associated with this, the term, you know, anything?
In the short term, Mr. Kinsheriff has indicated that he's operating on the existing agreement, which I think is less than $50,000. However, I did ask him to prepare a standalone agreement. We hadn't received it by the time of the vote, or by the time of the packet, or today. My only concern is, at this point, we do need a name to add to Chief Financial Officer for the wastewater projects.
And he's a contractor?
Say again?
He's a contractor.
So this is Kinsheriff Associates that is already under agreement. We're looking for an additional agreement. And then last but not least, my understanding is that it was going to be a document that did not exceed $50,000 to cover the full fiscal year. It would be prorated if it goes less than the full fiscal year.
You have to-
Can we, can we modify the, the language for a 30-day term, and that allows him to create this new language?
Yep.
Sure.
No objection to that.
Okay. So do you want to add that to the motion?
To the motion.
So that's, the 30 days is added to the motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. So any other discussion?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item B.
Vote to designate in-person early voting hours and locations for the 20, sorry, 2024 state primary election.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Emily?
Thank you. Sorry, Emily Mitchell, again, Town Clerk. So I did include a memorandum with a recommendation on specific dates and times that I believe is available in your packet. So again, state law does require in-person early voting to be available for all state and federal elections, both primary and general, and they define the parameters for that based on what type of election it is and your community size. So I spelled out my recommendation to comply with those requirements is Saturday, August 24, 2024, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p. M., and then Monday through Friday the following week, August 26 through August 30, during our full business hours, 8:30 a.m. to 4:00 p. M. And I'm proposing that it be based out of the Town Clerk's office here at Town Hall.
Great, thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
C?
Item C, vote to approve and sign the state primary election warrant to be held September 3, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, just for the record, there are three originals. We'd ask that the Board members sign all three.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. No further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, excuse me.
Item D, vote to appoint the Recommendation for Real Estate and Open Space Committee of Kathy Green to the Community Preservation Committee term to expire June 30, 27.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero.
Item E, approve the proposed Select Board Committee liaison list.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Was, were there any revisions? Don?
I repeat publicly that I would like to maintain being liaison to the Brooks Academy Commission because it's, there are things going on that are ongoing relative to funding, and I've been involved in them up until this point.
Well, I'm sure, Don, you have something I want, and we can discuss that after this meeting tonight. We'll figure it out.
Which one are my cars?
We'll figure it out. I, I support what you're asking for.
All right, so you'll just let us know?
Yeah, we'll let you know.
The change, okay. So we'll approve it with any revisions to be acknowledged later.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. And then we have-
Those are all set. Thank you. Set it down.
The discussion on F?
Madam Chair, if I could, nope, never mind, that's not mine. My apologies.
This is a-
Discussion on possible vote to approve all past Select Board names and years served on wall in the Griffin Room.
Yeah, if I may.
Yeah.
This was an initiative that was brought forward by Lou Urbano.
Sorry.
He did that in writing, and he did that verbally at one of our past meetings. He thought it would be a good thing to recognize all past Selectmen in this room.
Right, okay. Any other discussion on that item? Don?
It would be refreshing if my name showed up on a wall somewhere in attribution, as opposed to something else.
It is on a wall somewhere. I can assure you.
I'll bet, yeah.
It's already up on a wall. I'm not going to tell you which one.
Thanks for that, Jeff.
You're welcome, Don. You led right into that one.
I know.
All right, all in favor? Oh, did we get a motion?
I don't think there was a motion.
There wasn't a motion?
I'll second if, I think he motioned it.
Well, you motioned it, right. So you're seconded.
Oh, I didn't, but sure. I motioned for the point of discussion, why not?
All right, so.
I guess I understand it came from Lou, but do we have any more detail on it? You know, like, we just gonna vote on it, and then it's gonna disappear into the ether, or are we gonna?
We're just gonna write our names on the wall and just see what happens.
They all come with a permimark.
Well, if I could, to Pete's point, I think this is something in concept I would support, for sure. But to your point, I'd like to see how it's gonna be presented and where it's gonna be in the Griffin Room, so forth and so on.
So we wanna make a recommendation that, or take a vote, that the Town Administrator's Office works with Lou or whomever to bring this back to us?
Second.
Yeah, that's, I mean, we could certainly have Lou come in with his ideas on what he foresaw and talk with the staff about it and figure out what works best, and then bring it back to the board. So I guess the question is that we're gonna move forward with that initiative in terms of, we're gonna take a vote.
You wanna take a vote, let's take a vote.
We'll just take a vote to move forward with the initiative, but we don't have anything in motion.
Subject to detail.
Final review by the board.
Yeah, perfect.
Sure.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, if anything else, it was really to see if the board had an appetite for it. And I believe Lou will bring something else back.
Yeah, perfect.
But he was looking for us to acknowledge it and say, yeah, we'll do it.
Right. So he can move forward on that. Okay.
Item G, discussion on possible 2025 annual town meeting article to reduce regulatory quorum.
So Madam Chair, if I could, you may recall that there was a directive for staff to research with council on what it would take to modify the membership of various boards and committees. And council has affirmed that if you look at Chapter 7 of the General Bylaws, specifically Section 10, it lists 13 appointed town agencies. So if the town is looking to modify that, it would be a fairly straightforward bylaw to amend that section of the bylaw by indicating what changes, if any, you wanted to have to membership. So for my purposes, that is the beginning conversation with you folks. What is it you'd like to see changed in that table on Section 7-10?
Thank you, Joe. Open up to board members. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was the chair of the Bylaw Charter Review Committee when this got done. And actually, the purpose of this, to put it in the bylaw, was to make it a lot easier to be able to address than having to do a charter change, which would require two-thirds vote and then a ballot approval the following year. So as Joe points out, it's a relatively straightforward process for any of this, and all it takes is one town meeting vote, and we're done.
Mm-hmm. Any other discussion by board members?
Julie, I guess, the real problem right now is regulatory boards. If they don't make a quorum, they can't meet. If they can't meet, the taxpayers' residents don't get to move their projects forward. And we're in a bit of a situation now with the Conservation Commission, and they desperately need a few more people. And they're having to cancel some meetings. And this has happened in the Planning Board this year as well. So I think on the regulatory boards, it makes perfect sense. And planning, conservation, board of health, board of assessors never seems to have a problem. But I think if we write this with a range of people that the board could vote to change in emergency situations like this, where nobody wants to apply to be on the commission, I'd like to keep it as simple as possible. Obviously, the more people on these boards and commissions is important for different thoughts and ideas, but we need to be in a place where they can meet when they don't have members.
Don?
Sadly, Madam Chair, and that was what I was trying to bring up. Even to do that, we'd have to go to a town meeting, even though it doesn't take two years to do. But we're kind of hamstrung here. The way this was done, it's actually in a bylaw, and it has to be a revision to that bylaw.
If I may, just, Don, take Conservation Commission. Couldn't we do a range, 3 to 7?
We could, but it's gonna take, we can't do it.
I know we gotta go to town meeting.
Yeah. I would think we could, couldn't we?
I don't know that you can when it comes to the definition of quorum under the state statutes. You have to have a base number. So if you said that it was seven members, the quorum is four. So if you had five, you meet quorum. But if you say up to seven, I think that was the matter that council weighed in on, that you can't have a sliding scale because you need an affirmative number upon which to base quorum.
Right.
And if it helps your discussions, the next page in your agenda, in your packet, excuse me, is the current list of vacancies, so you can see, as was mentioned, when you look at the Zoning Board of Appeals. And, you know, in the table, there's inconsistent language insofar as there's reference to alternates and associate members. Regardless, under Zoning Board of Appeals, it says that they can have up to five associates, which we would recognize as alternates, but there are three vacancies. So you have the five full members, you have the five alternates, and you're down three.
All right. And the same with Conservation, as Michael mentioned earlier.
So what could help staff on drafting a general bylaw is your thoughts on the quorum number, so-called, and if there's any alternates you want to add or remove, et cetera. And then at least that way you have a draft article to start working from.
So I think this is a good idea. I think we should actually ask for feedback from those different committees.
Those 13 groups.
Yeah, and ask them what they think would be workable, and then have that come back to us so that we could then draft.
Totally agree.
Changes. Okay. So we'll take that action. You don't need to vote for that.
Correct. It's consensus. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Reaching out to those regulatory boards, those three. Should it be liaison, start with a liaison?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so Item H.
Item H, approve a special permit application for a one-day wines and malt permit for Howard's Trimbury Festival for events to be held on September 14, 2024, and September 15, 2024, 11:38 to 6:00 p.m. at the Community Center, 100 Oak Street.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero.
Item I, approve a special permit application for a one-day entertainment permit for the Howard's Chamber of Commerce and Special Friends Cafe for an event to be held at Brooks Park on August 24, 2024, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Entertainment-type yard games, live recorded music, amplification.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. And J.
Approve a special permit application for a one-day wine and malt permit for Rotary Club of Howard's Dennis for an event to be held at Stonewood Products, 15 Great Western Road on Howard's, I'm sorry, on September 28, 2024, 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Five zero. And then K.
Approve a special permit app for a one-day all alcohol and one-day entertainment permit for Lower Cape Outreach Council. Event to be held at 204 Sisson Road on September 21, 2024, 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Entertainment-type recorded live music, amplification, theatrical exhibition, play or moving picture show.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. And now L. Discussion and possible vote to seek outside legal counsel relative to the Housing Assistant Corporation family transition on Love Lane in Dennis. And this came up as discussions from board members to say that they wanted to seek additional action, and so I'm opening it up for discussion. We do know that the discretionary DRI was rejected by the commission. We received a letter from Elisa Magnotta from Hack. The one thing I would like to point out, Elisa, in your letter to the board, was that it indicated that Howard's was invited to attend those informal sessions, and we have information from our police chief that they were invited only informally through a phone call from colleagues. So Howard's was never officially invited to attend any discussion, so I'm just pointing that out because I read your letter, and thank you. But that brings it back to the question of this board talking about going to outside counsel. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know, I'm going to recuse myself from the actual vote, but I will point out, I'm also president of HESH. I have basically the same concern with the HESH board meeting where we were asked to sign on in support of this, as I do about this, is if, it would have been just so simple to pick up the phone. It just felt disrespectful that we would have, we asked to get further information about it, and we asked here to get further information, and we were never formally addressed. It was really nice that you're here tonight, and I really appreciate that, but it's so much easier when everybody talks to each other.
Thank you, Don. Any other discussion on who wants to go further on the legal discussion?
I would like to. I think, well, I would like to get other legal counsel. I know ours weighed in on the Dover Amendment that's being used to make this project possible. You know, first and foremost, and thank you, Don, for saying the communication would have been nice, and it is nice that Elisa's here tonight, but we're a little late for that. And the town of Howard's is gonna be directly affected by this project. And to not have a seat at the table, even though we asked for it, was really not a great thing to do. And it doesn't speak highly of Hack to me. I will say that the Cape Cod Commission, I believe, has failed the town of Howard's and the town of Dennis. Their vote and the sales pitch from the attorney seemed like there was not a lot of thought put into it. These are my words, because there's an awful lot of talk around about be careful what you say, because the lawyer's gonna come after you. Not that concerned about that, because I don't care who lives there. My problems are the environment and the traffic. And at least three board members or commission members had some great thought about the traffic. Peter Okun, I believe his name is, Province Town Commission Member, I'm not quite sure where he came from with this, but him asking the question, why the towns are asking for the DRI, and what is the actual reason, is shameful. The actual reason is exactly what we've discussed in this room. It's traffic and it's environment. Now, if you just read the Cape Cod Commission report, which has been sent around to a few from 1999, all of these issues were addressed. And to say that nothing is changing, and to say that the septic flow is gonna go down, the math doesn't add up. None of it adds up. But of course, we didn't have the ability to speak about it. So keeping on with the agenda topic, because I can go on for five pages of notes about the shameful commission meeting, where this seems to be just, there's nothing to see here, folks, we're gonna put it forward. And that traffic study, I'm not sure where the commission is even getting their numbers at this point. None of it makes any sense to me at all, and it hasn't really been explained, other than that commission meeting, and those traffic numbers can't be true. They seem to say, we know who's moving in, we know what they're gonna have for vehicles or not, we know what's gonna happen on that road, we know the deliveries, so you people don't need to see or hear anything. Again, I find it shameful, and I would love to see us hire counsel and at least see what our rights are, because there is things in the 1999 report that are still valid. And I would love to get a traffic study, and a company in that will do a traffic study that isn't based on this criteria from a long time.
We've done on Friday.
Excuse me, you cannot speak from there. You have to speak at the podium, and currently, we're not taking comments, so.
So I, for one, absolutely support getting counsel to figure out what our rights are as the town of Howard's.
And then just to be clear on that, just want to make sure the public understands, as well as board members, that if we were to seek outside counsel, KP has already made it clear that they would not obviously represent us, which is why we're having this discussion. Jeff?
Yeah, I would like to echo Select Board Member McCaskill's opinions. And I'm not gonna get into a big diatribe of how I feel about this, but I work for Howard's, and I'm gonna work to protect Howard's. I was, I am very disappointed in the Cape Cod Commission and Hack and how they handled this. It's very disingenuous. And it just leaves me wondering what we don't know. I have the same concerns about the environment. I have the concerns about traffic. I hear our residents. I understand what they're saying. It makes perfectly good sense to me. With the presentation the other, last week or the week before, did not make sense to me. I would like to explore terminating Howard's road at the end of the line, so that if Dennis wants to do this, they can find a way in to their property through Dennis. That would take care of our Howard's traffic issue. I don't know if it can be done, but that is something that I would like to explore with counsel, of terminating our road on the town line. That's all.
Thank you, Jeff. Don, did you have any further comments?
I'm gonna have to abstain from voting.
Pete?
I'll keep it brief. I believe my colleagues have echoed, you know, the sentiment of most of the board members, if not all. I would agree that I was disappointed that Hack did not respond to any of our inquiries. I was obviously disappointed in the commission's vote. But I think Jeff touched upon it. It's incumbent upon us to do what's in the best interest of the town of Howard's, and exploring options available to us is what's in our best interest. So I would agree to pursue outside counsel and at least have a better understanding of what rights we may have as a community and what legal paths we have to pursue. So I'm in agreement.
Thank you, Pete.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
I just would like to go on record and let the public know that, I think you've heard from all the board members, most of the board members, ones abstaining, understandably. But I think it's important to understand that we are gonna exercise and take every measure we can to figure out a way to protect our town. Now, what the public has to understand is that when we seek outside counsel, if it just doesn't seem like there's any hope, and we're just gonna be spending an awful lot of money to find out we get to the same place that we are in right now, I want the public to understand that we are gonna try our hardest to get done what we need to get done. So.
Yeah, well, that was gonna be my comment, is that the only way I'm in favor of going forward with hiring outside counsel for what we've just described is to see if there's any option and any kind of dialogue. I don't believe that you can end a road and take it back, and I don't see any path in that. And I would want a dollar limit, because we spend enough money on legal, and the Dover Amendment is a Dover Amendment, and we've heard from counsel in terms of options. So I just don't want to spend good money if it's gonna end up nowhere, because we have a lot of things we need to spend money on in town.
That's my point, 100%.
So, and the only other thing I will say, and, you know, I've already said it, is that, you know, I have no problem with whatever is going in in the facility. Whatever it is, doesn't bother me at all. I just would have liked to, you know, I do permitting for a living, so part of what we always do is reach out, and it always goes better when we reach out and we have a conversation. We know what our clients' rights are, we know what they can build, but it always makes good sense to have that communication and bring in versus push out. And I think that's what you're hearing from this board, is we felt completely pushed out of the process, ignored, and it does affect our town. And really, it's not about whatever's gonna, whoever's gonna live there, it doesn't bother me at all. It's really just about access and about how that's gonna work. And, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen for school. You can, you know, it's very public that we are overburdened with school budgets. So that's something we need to focus on to understand. If people are gonna go to school here, that's fine, that's their right. We just need to know, how do we address that? Because we're already talking about having conversations with Chatham, and that's for real reasons. So that's my only other concern in that. I mean, it's sort of broad and probably can't be answered, but it's always better to just be brought into the conversation rather than left out. So I think that's the bulk of the reason this board has continued to talk about it so much. It's part of our next conversation about traffic, which is not only for that area, but primarily. So I would say if you wanted to put, this is just me speaking, if you wanted to put a dollar amount on that motion, I'd be in favor of it. Otherwise, I'm not open to an open-ended, you know, legal counsel contract. Joe?
To that last point, the request for legal services is not exempt from Chapter 30B, so I need a dollar amount to at least set the standard by which we're going to receive quotes.
Great, all right. Anyone want to offer a number?
I don't want to offer a number yet because I think it's important that we get a lawyer. And to retain a lawyer, retainer fees, we could pick a number of $3,000 to retain it and then come back to the board once we get a scope of work and have that conversation with them. So if for the purposes of 30B, let's put a number of consultation amount on there to speak and at least be able to pitch our case and have the lawyer say, worth it, not worth it.
Right.
Or come back with a number, then we would come back to procurement with an actual number.
So I could do a not to exceed, $10,000 number, that lets me do sound business practices. And that's extremely helpful language because you're talking about a consultation for future legal services. So it makes it easier to do. So I appreciate that.
Okay.
If that's the will of the board.
Right, so is that your motion?
Yes.
I second that.
So just for clarification, not to exceed $10,000.
At least to come back to us.
Right.
So I'm not saying start to finish is going to be $10,000.
No.
But yes.
But for the, right, for the consults.
Yes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All abstained? One?
401.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Last item under old business is the traffic update with Steve Rhodes, and Steve is on.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Steve joins us remotely. He is the avatar known as SV, and now you can see him.
Good evening, Steve.
Good evening, and thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you for joining us. Oh.
He's there, too.
Oh, he's there. I'm not used to this working in front of us. So we have had extensive conversation about traffic studies as it relates to different housing developments on Queen Anne Road. We've also talked about the Love Lane project that we just were discussing now. And then there are other elements of in-town safety issues in Harwich Port, et cetera. So this board has been talking a while about traffic, and I'm going to, Joe, I don't know if you have anything more you want to add to that, or if we should just go off on one specific part of town first, or how do you want to handle it?
No, I would appreciate you continuing on. You've covered basically what Steve and I have had preliminary discussions on, so I think you're on the right path. Pardon the expression.
So I guess to follow up on that, Steve, you know, we have some old information. Then we have a traffic study that was shared through the Love Lane project, through our police chief, Kevin Considine. And so I guess the question first to you is that, you know, are we in a situation where we can take past information, the existing traffic study that we've got from Love Lane, and any other information to get an updated study done to understand what we're really dealing with? What is the current traffic situation that we're dealing with, off-season and then in the on-season, and what would the timeframe would be to conduct such a study?
So how old is the old info? Do you have a rough date that was taken?
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
You cited some old information, do you know roughly how old that is?
I think that was 2019, was it, or 2020, that we had old Cape Cod Commission traffic?
Thank you. Steve, the references to the data that you and I talked about, that is publicly available on the Cape Cod Commission's site, where they indicate Harwich-specific data. And you and I talked about, as I talked with Steve Tupper, trying to get those re-energized for more recent data.
Got it, thank you. Yeah, so I actually just today received an email from David Dolan at the Cape Cod Commission with the current summer counting program locations that they did just this past July. So we have that information. In short, there's only a small amount of that information that's really truly useful for a traffic study. In talking with my traffic engineers internally at VHB, they indicated we would want to get a vendor to do turning movement counts at whatever number of intersections our desire to be in the studied area. So the first question I have to, and we're in kind of a scoping stage right now, so it's good timing that we're talking. So the first question is, do you have kind of defined west or east project limit for the study area? And I guess could be north and south as well, because we talked about the Main Street corridor as well as Queen Anne, and I know Main Street, you know, feeds down to Great Western and then eventually to the center of town. So just looking to get a little more feedback on where the study is envisioned to encapsulate.
I think, just to say an overview, and then I'll open it up to board members, but I think a couple of choke points are, you know, the intersection of 124 with Queen Anne Road on both ends, and then also the other end of Queen Anne that goes down past our transfer station, that comes out onto Old Main Street, and then goes up to the four-way stop with Depot to the left, Love Lane, I guess, to the north. So that would be one section. And then I, you know, and this is on my behalf, but based on a lot of feedback we've gotten from residents over the last year, is, well, really longer than that, but in particular the last year, and an experience I had in Harwich Port in the winter, where helping an elderly person across the crosswalk nearly got killed because it's just poorly lit, the crosswalks aren't visible. So I would like to see Harwich Port improvements as well. So those are my perspective, and I'll open it up to board members. Michael?
Thank you for being here, Steve. I guess one quick question. Steve Tupper, did he ever respond to us from the Cape Cod Commission? Has the Cape Cod Commission even acknowledged Harwich, other than what they did last week?
So yes, they had about a month ago. However, I have not been successful in connecting with them since then, and certainly not since last week.
Okay, thank you. Steve, this came up a lot most recently due to projects that are looming that may happen. The town of Harwich purchased on Route 124 up by the highway entrance, the town of Harwich purchased a large tract of land, and they've put an RFP out for a housing development. There is a proposal on Pine Oaks 4 that is due to come in for a lot of units on Queen Anne Road, just past our transfer station, headed to Main Street and the Four Corners, where the earlier conversation was based on the Love Lane project, where they're talking, I think, about 73 families, adapting the nursing home into 73 families. So now you've got three fairly good-sized housing projects, proposals at very least. We do have, Pine Oaks had given us a preliminary parking, not us, the board, but at a meeting at the police station, a traffic study. You know, and I think a lot of people picked a lot of holes in that, and the data that we seem to be getting out of Cape Cod Commission and the way that they formulate their traffic studies at very least, when I do the math, as simple as just driving the road every single day, it doesn't add up at all. So I'm really looking for more of a comprehensive study and looking at it with the additions of this, so that we at least have a say on some of these projects and not just a traffic study done by the commission that really seems to make no sense at all. Lastly, Exit 10, and our DPW director has a fair amount of information from Steve Tupper on Exit 10, but getting on the highway in the summertime at Exit 10, it really backs up from Exit 11, even beyond, closer to Orleans, all the way past Exit 10, every single day when people are leaving that end of the Cape. And it's almost impossible to get on there, and much better to drive around and get on at 9 in Dennis. So that area, for this board member at very least, is the most important right now because when Pine Oaks submits their plan, we need to have our own information, be it good or be it bad, we need to have our own information to be able to weigh in to the state on that project. And as you might have heard earlier, talking about outside counsel for the Love Lane project, it would be good to have some actual data and not just a traffic study that was driven through to the commission and then denied for the DRI denied. So that area, and then the exit, you know, Exit 10, the four-way stop there, four-stop sign, that area is about to see a lot of development, or potentially a lot of development. And this board and the residents really need to see real data.
Thank you, Michael. I'm sorry, Steve, did you want to make a response? I apologize.
No, that was just helpful background, so thank you. That's good to hear.
Yeah, and Steve, thank you for being here. Jeff Handler here. I'm 100% in support of what Julie had to say, as well as Michael. My only question would be, and I'm going to ask Michael, you were talking about the on-ramp to 10. I would also like to see some data on the off-ramp because as if the Pine Oaks Village and Love Lane, that's going to be a point of entry from the mid-Cape Highway with a stoplight, you know, 200 feet up to the right, I'd like to see some data of how many cars are exiting off of Exit 10, heading toward Harwich Center as well. If that makes sense to you, I mean, you're the expert, I would defer to you, but I know for me, when I come off of that exit, there's a backup, you know, even in the off months, not just in the summer months.
Yep, I think that makes sense to include that in the study as well. That's a pretty relevant throughway there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I'm going to go along with the old numbers, if that's where we're at. Just so you understand, Steve, what Michael's talking about on 124, the entrance going west on Route 6 recently has actually dumped out onto 124 in both directions, where people are just sitting on 124, waiting to get into the ramp because the ramp itself is clogged up. It's not just the highway, it's backed up onto roads. That's its own problem, but I will add, if you're going to be doing what we're going to be doing, and Pine Oaks was going to be, proposed to be located, I would like to have the old Main Street stub that goes, meets up at the bottom of Queen Anne Road, analyzed also to see what the existing conditions are right now.
I mentioned that. I talked about the end of that.
But the old Main is to Depot. Main Street is from Great Western until you get to the old Main.
Yeah, well, so you're saying the opposite end.
The opposite end, just so the whole thing is mapped out, because that conceivably could be an alternate route, but you need to know what the existing conditions are to even know that.
Okay, so just, so do you understand that part, Steve, in terms of not just the intersection, but the far end to the, basically to the...
Great Western. It comes out to the right.
Yeah, to Great Western, which would be south, I guess.
Yep, that makes sense. That was one of my questions on whether that segment should be included, so that's good to know.
Okay, and Pete?
That was the stretch I wanted as well, so.
And so, yeah, go ahead.
Don, were you referring to Great Western Road as well to be a part of this?
I suppose so, but I mean, certainly, like I said, the nomenclature turns is different once you get to the fork at Queen Anne Road, it turns from Main Street to Old Main.
Yeah, right.
And I know, my parents live on Great Western Road, corner of Great Western and Rocky, and ever since I...
Well, that intersection will be impacted if that road is used, yeah.
That would become an artery, for sure.
Anybody else have anything else to add? Joe, do you have anything more you would want us to give direction on?
Not at this point, but I suspect you may want to hear from the general public for sure.
Is there anybody in the public who wants to say anymore about the areas we've identified or add anything to the conversation?
It's great, all the roads you talked, all the roads you mentioned.
Just state your name.
Teresa Johnson, King Henry Road. I think it's great, all the areas you're going to cover, it's all the bottlenecks with these three potential developments going in, and especially the highway. I know I avoid trying to get on the highway around 5:00 because it's backed up crazy, and we just reroute through all of our roads to get out to Exit 9. So all those roads are definitely going to be impacted, and the study would definitely, definitely be a positive move, you know, for the town. You know, so you know what the movement is and how bad it is.
Great, thank you.
Jerry Stockdale, 286 Main, and I just want to reiterate that where Main Street or Queen Anne comes onto Main Street, and then you go over the Herring River, where you've got telephone poles and guardrails and really patchy roadwork, that is a treacherous area now for walkers, bikers, drivers. It's a big roll-through spot, you know, people don't always stop, people that are taking a left onto Queen Anne don't always wait for the person that's coming on. So I think that it's great that you're going to study that, and thinking about these housing developments, and if they go through and all this happens, a road widening project, a light, major work needs to be done, especially if Pine Oaks gets its 246 units and it's 800 to 1,000 people and it's 450 cars. That's going to be major. It's treacherous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Paula Miles. I live at 163 Main Street, just down from the four-way stop on Depot, and I've been there for almost 60 years. And I can tell you, it's lined up traffic there. If you drive on it, you know. But I wanted to do another thing that I noticed, and I'm there a lot now because I'm home. When people are frustrated by having to wait at a light or at a stop sign, especially the young, when they take off, they take off full-speed motorcycles on their back wheels quite often. I am amazed no one has been killed on that road, because the driving is not only too many drivers, but it's crazy driving. So, thank you. Police presence would be a good thing, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody online that wanted to speak to the traffic?
I have one more thing.
Hearing no one, I'm going to, let me just let this gentleman speak.
Lou Larson, 106 Main Street Extension. What are the possibilities of terminating the road on the Harwich side? It is, we went through this with the Eagle Pond approval, and the traffic hasn't cut down. You're adding another dimension with EV scooters, people with their carry, it's, there is going to be a problem.
I think the only way we'll get an answer to that question is through hiring outside counsel.
That guy can get the answer. He came up with the idea, but keep on with it because it's very important.
Thank you.
It's a very dangerous...
Dan Baker, Northwest Gate Road. I'm just wondering with the traffic studies, do they look at how narrow and winding a road is for risk when they do that?
I believe, but we'll defer to Steve to answer that. Did you hear that question?
Yes, the character of the road is considered when evaluating the classification and the, you know, suitable volumes for a road.
Okay, because the area that was discussed close to Great Western Road for Main Street, that area is very narrow and very winding in that area, so maybe take a look at that for your study, is what I'd just like to suggest.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair, but just got me thinking here. As long, I just want to see what the rest of the board members say about this, and this is totally dissociated with Pine Oaks or any of the other projects. As long as we're looking at this, there's a pre-existing condition, once Main Street hits Great Western Road, that two-way stop is insane at this point in time. There are people clogging, going back about a quarter of a mile on Great Western Road where the First Congo churches, people are stacked up coming up Sisson Road. Nobody seems to understand that the people coming from east to west actually have a right of way and no stop sign. If we're going to be commissioning a study, I think that's probably part of the whole situation that we want to at least look at, because we've got problems in general in that area.
Yeah, you know, I agree with you. I think, especially with the development that's being proposed, not too far away from there, that whole area is going to get more congested. So I'm right with you, that two-way stop is, it's a tough place to navigate. So I don't know if it makes sense to expand the traffic study to that spot, but...
It's all part and parcel, because that's the lower end of 124 that you're bringing traffic up to also.
Sure, sure.
I've educated a few people about that right away there.
I don't want to know how.
So do you have adequate information, Steve, to go forward to give us a scope and come back to us with an update?
So the one other request we have, so we've clarified the study area, the one other request we would have would be specific locations and the proposed development details, like the type of use and the size. I know there's been some numbers that have been stated tonight. We would need, you know, documentation, whatever the latest plans are for the various developers of these locations. And we would also have to have their currently planned site driveway for access points. If that's up in the air, I think we'd have to kind of caveat the study a little bit when it comes to that site-specific level, but if that's all we have for now, then we'll take that. So we would just request that information to be... So, we would just request that information to be relayed to us, so we can have that as our, as our starting point for the proposed conditions.
Okay. Joe, you can share that information.
Yep.
Yep, so we'll get you that information.
So, Madam Chair, members, if I could, Steve and I will try to connect this week to follow up, crystallize everything that was talked about today. Steve, I can fill in some of the blanks, so to speak, on some of the other items that you're looking for, so that we can begin this in earnest.
Thank you. Any, any other...
That sounds good.
Oh, Michael, did you have...
Just, just one thing, tracking back to your request of Harwich Port.
Yeah.
We all did receive that letter from the business owner down there, and we've talked about Harwich Port a few times over the last two or three years. What specifically would we want them to look at? This, this project, North, North Harwich, Harwich Center, Pleasant Lake, is, is in my mind a lot more important than that right now, just because of what's, what's been proposed. But what would you be, what are you thinking for that study, Julie?
So, I, I want them, I would like an analysis of the amount of traffic going through there, you know, the speeds, the crosswalks. We also, and this is another agenda item I hope to bring back for the end of August, is based on the email we've got from Dennis Miller as well, and we've talked about this extensively, so I know, we know that DOT is involved, Mass DOT is involved, but we also added the other additional, we had Dennis Miller's email, and we had the other gentleman's email, talking about sidewalk. We all can appreciate that as well. I know that's going to be a big ask. But I think that, you know, based on current situation in Harwich, even in the off-season, it's a dangerous place, and especially in the evening. So, I'd be looking at lighting, the amount of traffic, the type of traffic that's going through there, the speeds, and any way to improve accessibility by pedestrians. And that is going to involve the state, I know, but I think any traffic information that we can have that bolsters our argument is important. So, while we're doing that traffic study, I would like to incorporate the other problem areas I see it.
Thank you. If I may, through you, Steve, as far as the, the speed in Harwich Port goes and, and doing a study and the state being involved, is, is there anything that you see that we would need that study to petition the state through our board to tell, to ask them to reduce the speed limit in Harwich Port?
I think that would be the second step after the initial study is done. There's a whole separate process to have a speed regulation revised, which involves, step one is just checking the existing conditions, getting data on the existing speed so that we can tell if it's possible under the current state regulations to lower it. So, we'll, we'll know that when we get data on that area of Harwich Port.
Thank you.
But I think it would be a, a separated step, but this first step is the right direction to go, to get to that.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Steve? No. So, thank you, Steve, for taking the time to join us tonight, and we look forward to hearing back from you. Joe, you'll be in touch with the info, and thanks, Steve.
Thank you. I just have one, one quick question on the Harwich Port area, as far as the bounds of that study. Would you consider Bank Street to Lower County Road, or would you want to go a little bit further, further out?
I think a little further out, maybe, maybe to Sisson.
Okay.
Sacquetucket to Sisson?
Yeah.
Because they're still flying past some of the schools.
Yeah, yeah. Because, well, and then we're going to have a sidewalk and, right, yeah.
Sacquetucket, Harvard.
Yeah, Sacquetucket to, to Sisson.
Sacquetucket, Harvard to Sisson, okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you all.
So, on to the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, there are two contracts I'll announce and two appointments. The first contract is with Comtronics, and this is for basically public safety UHF repeater. The contract is for $19,691, and this is coming directly through the fire department's operating budget, as it was a budgeted expense. The second item is by way of a grant with Outer Cape Health Services. The town has granted Outer Cape Health a, a grant of $37,174, disseminates from the town's opioid settlement funds, and it is to fund a recovery coach program, which I think we all agree is critically necessary. Because it is a grant, it is set to expire with the fiscal year, so I'll be working with our health director to analyze whether there's an appetite for an existing ongoing through the grant or any other thing, any other mechanism for funding such as the operating budget. But I want to be clear, right now it is simply a grant program that will expire with the fiscal year, but still very necessary, and we look forward to working with Outer Cape Health. The appointment first is for an executive assistant in the Building and Conservation Department. I'm pleased to announce that Sherri Reisner is going to be joining us in that role. As you may recall, this was a role that we created, I believe, over a year ago at Town Meeting to support those two departments, and she'll be joining us officially on August 12th. And then secondly, Peter Michelson, and I'm going to look in the direction, I believe, Peter's, as a custodian, is going to be assigned to our community center, so we're thrilled to have him. And as you know, that was a position that was funded through Town Meeting.
Great, thank you.
And that concludes my report. Other than to say that Peter will be joining us August 12th as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Pete, select board members report.
Two things, if I could, to you, Madam Chair, do we, and just a question, do we still offer a non-resident taxpayer meeting, or no?
Yeah, I believe we still have one. I don't know the date.
We recorded one.
Sorry?
Yeah.
We had switched to recording one, but I don't think we did that this year.
I don't know. It's a good question.
You have a meeting.
Do you know, Joe?
I haven't heard anything about it.
Yeah, you have not had a non-resident taxpayer meeting since COVID. Because of COVID, there was a video vignette that was done, and I can certainly work with the teams to do those videos again, and, and continue to perpetuate that. Otherwise, if you're looking to have one, we can certainly arrange that. I can tell you, in the five years I've been here, you have not had one that I've participated in.
Something I'd like to see, but again, that's up to the board. And the only other thing I have, Madam Chair, and this is for future discussion, based on a couple of conversations I had with some of you folks, I use the wonderful Google machine, and this document, I believe, it probably generated from MMA or something along those lines. This has to do with the town administrator evaluation, and several communities use this exact document, so I assume, again, it was MMA or some other similar entity. Again, just for a conversation point at a future meeting, nothing we need to discuss tonight. Just wanted to put it out there for you folks to see.
Great, thank you. Anything else? You good?
I'm good.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jeff and I joined with Cindy Williams in the chamber to welcome a new business in Harwich Port, Cape Life Brand, in the Cape Port Center, so I just wanted to give them a shout-out, welcome to the community.
That's great. Jeff?
Yeah, I was with, there, there with Don, and I, what a, what a cool, cool spot they have there, and I think everybody should go in and check it out. A couple of things, Madam Chair, if I could, that I just don't want to lose track of. I would like to, and I'll send emails on all this stuff.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. I'd like to know what our next step is regarding a meeting with Chatham for the, for the school.
Yeah, I can answer that.
Yeah, if you want to answer that, that'd be great.
I, I reached out to, to Joe, to reach out to counterparts, to get that scheduled, and I believe that's in the works currently, so.
Great, and that would be with...
So, that would be with the two chairs, the superintendent, the two TAs obviously, and superintendent and business manager, and then a school committee chair as well.
Excellent, thank you for that. Now that we've, yeah, Bill, please, go ahead.
Could I ask that Charles Grushka represents me at that meeting?
It's very knowledgeable.
Then we'll have another, we'll have a follow-up meeting, hopefully, with both boards to have a conversation.
And now that we have our goals and objectives, I believe, solidified, what's our next step in putting those into action, or?
Well, they are our goals and objectives. We voted them.
And, and now we are...
So, they...
They are already in action, I guess, is what you're saying.
Yes, they're in action.
Fantastic. Harwich Center sidewalks, that's one that I don't want to lose sight of. I got the Dennis Miller, Harwich Port, I think that was a well-thought-out letter by Dennis, couple of them. The voucher for the school...
Yeah, especially, yes.
The kindergarten...
Early childhood education.
Preschool.
Preschool, yeah.
So, do we have a, have we reached out back to the Rocking Unicorn?
I have not yet. We're in the middle of doing the procurement process...
Okay.
To see who the management company is going to be to give that information.
Great.
I'm hoping they have that concluded before Labor Day, of course.
Yeah, and if you wouldn't mind just reaching out to the Rocking Unicorn and let her know, like, where things sit, because I'm, I'm getting more and more inquiries about that. And then Town Meeting prep, I'd love to see us come up every once in a while on an agenda, an item that we can, low-hanging fruit that we can get kind of on the books for our Town Meeting prep, so we're not compressed again at the end of the year.
Actually, thank you for reminding me, because I jotted down my, the articles that we've already talked about that could be drafted. It would be great if we could get an update on when we can have a draft from council, so that we can, you know, look at them and vet them and just be done with them.
I'd like to be able to compare notes to make sure I've captured everything. I have a list going in my office.
Yeah, okay. Great, thank you.
Thanks, that's all.
Michael?
I have nothing.
Yeah, oh, I just want to say one thing, I love the Cape Life sweatshirts, they're really soft.
That'd be great.
What was you doing, Jerry?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.